All right, thank you so much for being here this evening. We're gonna go ahead and get ready to start. Thank you so much for being here this evening. Today is Monday, November 21st, 2022. The time is 6 o'clock. At this time, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Neal. Councilmember Hughes is going to be out this evening. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson. And Vice Mayor Cortez is out this evening as well. Mayor Walter is here. At this time, we will go ahead and stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, at this time, we'll go ahead and we will move to our first call to the public this evening. We do have one call to the public that would like to speak at this time. Ms. Kathy Adam.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor in absence and council. My name is Kathy Adam, and I'd like to just say a few words proudly about Mary Battle. I came here in 2008, and I knew no one except my father's friend, Pete Guerrero. And as we all know, you don't hang out with your father's friends. So I joined the Women's Club. And I was lucky enough, my first night, I sat at a table with Mary Battle and our former mayor, Vicky Kilvinger. And we have been friends ever since. I have witnessed what Mary has done for the Women's Club. She got me to volunteer with her, and we cleaned the baseboards. I don't know that there's a worse job other than cleaning the toilets, but we did all those baseboards in that Women's Club house. Over the years, her dedication has been unbelievable, and she is just tireless in her efforts to keep that going in the best spirit, in the best community spirit, with no personal agenda. She is at the farmer's market on Saturdays. She has entertained many of us in our home. And I just can't say enough, and I am so happy that she's getting this proclamation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in person or online that would like to speak at this time? All right, there'll be a second call to the public at the end as well. At this time, we'll move on to item six, which is our presentations. Ms. Mary Battle, would you meet us over by the Town of Florence side? And council, would you please follow us down?
Check.
All right, so we have, we have a proclamation and a surprise here this evening, tonight.
Oh, I love surprises.
All right, Mary, thank you for being here. And everybody here to support Mary, thank you for being here as well. Let's give her a round of applause. We have one that goes on permanent record with the town, so it will always be in historic documents, as well as one that you will be taking home. This is a proclamation declaring November 21st, 2022, as Mary Battle Day in the Town of Florence. Please know that this is the closest day that we could get to your birthday. She just celebrated her birthday, let's wish her a happy birthday. She is 89 years young. Happy birthday. Whereas Mary Battle was born a coal miner's daughter and has lived a life as dedicated service to the community. And whereas Mary graduated from West Scranton High School, Scranton, Pennsylvania, and attended DeAnza College in Capertino, California, with a focus in accounting, married her husband Fred, and raised two children. And whereas Mary took several jobs in accounting, ultimately leading the financial services of the business she and her husband started. And whereas Mary moved to Arizona in 2007 after the passing of her husband, where she started her long and illustrious career in volunteerism in and around the Town of Florence. And whereas Mary has contributed many hours in support of the Florence Women's Club, Anthem K8, Florence Anthem Hospital, Florence Senior Center, Florence Farmer's Market, and the Coolidge Disabled American Veterans. And whereas Mary's crowning joy is supporting the Florence Police Department for the past 16 years and has been instrumental in the success of many of the department's community-oriented programming. Now therefore, I, Tara Walter, Mayor of the Town of Florence, Arizona, do hereby proclaim November 21st, 2022, as Mary Battle Day in the Town of Florence. And Mary, we would also like to present you with a key to the Town of Florence. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I would. I don't, yeah. I may talk too much, though. You know, when I moved here, I didn't have a life. I said, oh, what am I gonna do with my life? I'm retired, I'm a widow, so, you know, I have to do something. So I came down to the town council meetings, and I met Vicky Kilvinger. And she introduced me to the town, and that's where it all started. This town has given me a life and saved my life. For all the places that I could volunteer and help anybody that needed it, I was there for them. And I still continue it. You know, I'm old now, but it doesn't stop me. I still keep on going, and I would wish that many more seniors would get involved in the Town of Florence. It has so many opportunities for you, and it keeps you alive and going. Thank you.
So we had a small business owner here a few minutes ago.
Aaron bumped the volume on the handheld like one or two. Sorry, I was coming to get this going. It's gonna make me run it. All right, whoops. We'll just wait then. Depends if Jeff set it up that way or not, but yeah, I can make it loop if not. Getting ready to.
All right, we have one more proclamation for Small Business Saturday. Can you hear it?
Thank you.
Aaron bumped the volume on Mayor's mic.
All right, so our next presentation? Trenton, can this, are you hearing me? Testing, testing. We're back on the record now. Testing, 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 testing. Bye, ladies, thank you, and gentlemen. We have one more presentation this evening. This is for our Small Business Saturday. With us, we have Sophie from the Chamber of Commerce. This is a proclamation for Small Business Saturday, declaring November 26th, 2022, Small Business Saturday. Whereas the government of Florence, Arizona, celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. Whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 32.5 million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 62% of net new jobs created since 1995. And small businesses employ 46.8% of the employees in the private sector of the United States. And whereas 58% of the shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business, and 54% reported that they dined or ordered takeout from a small restaurant, bar, or café on Small Business Saturday in 2021. Whereas Florence, Arizona supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed, the Saturday after Thanksgiving is Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Mayor Walter of Florence, Arizona, do hereby proclaim November 25th, 2022, as Small Business Saturday, and urge residents of our community and communities around the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday throughout the year. Thank you for being here this evening. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much. I am honored to represent the Florence Chamber of Commerce as a board member and accept this. We have so many wonderful small businesses in Florence, then they really do enrich our lives. So I'm honored to be here to celebrate them and accept this award today. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Garcia.
Yes, ma'am.
Was Ms. Jones able to make it this evening?
Ms. Jones fell ill, and we will be rescheduling her.
Okay, let's hold this item for when she can be here.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Next, we have item D, which is a presentation on fiscal year 2022, 2023, of the first quarter financial report. Mr. Carl Dudding.
One moment, Mary, just need to share the screen real quick.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is a review of Q1, July 1st through September 30th, 2022. We'll start looking at our general fund major revenues. Our first column here is Q1 of last year, followed by our current budget, our current quarter one, our forecast, and then our up-down indicators. Our city sales tax in Q1 came in at $641,000 versus $855,000 previous year. Property taxes came in at $1,000 versus $2,400 year-over-year. These two items come in twice a year in bulk, so we'll see those in Q2. Building permits came in at $61,000 versus $321,000 prior year. We had a budget of $1 million. We have revised that down to $500,000, and we'll be watching that and in Q2, with Q2 review, discuss that in more detail. State sales tax came in at $785,000 versus $748,000 prior year. State income tax came in at $1.2 million versus $890,000. Auto license tax came in at $402,000 versus $421,000. These are seven major revenue sources in the town's general fund. The total revenue for Q1 came in at $3.600,000 versus $3.800,000. We've revised our budget down to $20.9 million. Part of that was the $500,000 in building permits, offset by approximately $130,000 uptick in some minor revenue lines. Expenses for the quarter came in at $3.4 million versus $3.5 million. We had $198,000 unrealized gain that affects us. Again, that's just a paper loss. It's not an actual loss until the bonds are actually sold. And this negative loss, you'll see it occurring in the various funds. The General Capital Fund had revenues of $383,000 versus $81,000. Expenditures were $60,000 versus $238,000. This is just a timing of capital projects. Construction tax came in at $1,000 versus $26,000 last year. There's been no expenditures in the construction tax this year. We did budget $2.6 million for capital projects. Our food tax came in at $46,000 versus $23,000 year-over-year. Expenditures were $81,000, no expenditures in Q1 last year. The HIRF revenues came in at $300,000 versus $429,000 year-over-year. That's $130,000 drop. $35,000 of this was lower taxes, gas taxes. And then we had an unrealized loss of $103,000, and that was offset by a positive pickup of $8,000. The expenses, $383,000 versus $387,000. Our transportation excise tax, $440,000 versus $317,000 year-over-year. And expenditures came in at $471,000 versus $455,000. The 2021 excise tax capital projects revenue, this is the bond sale. We won't record any revenue other than interest income on the proceeds in that fund before we use them to pay off expenses. The expenses for Q1 were $271,000. This is a new fund, so nothing there last year. ARPA funds, Q1, we had $371,000 in expenditures versus $4,000 last year. This has a $6.3 million budget. The water fund, Q1 had $808,000 in revenue versus a $962,000 last year. This is a drop of $154,000. Again, there's an unrealized investment loss of $125,000. Connection fees were down $18,000. User fees were down $11,000. Expenses came in at $494,000 versus $421,000. Expenses were $73,000 higher. This was due to capital costs of $62,000 and miscellaneous expenses of $11,000. So the $62,000 capital higher is in the budget. So that's just a quarter-over-quarter comparison. The wastewater fund revenue came in at $624,000 versus $959,000 year-over-year. That's a $335,000 loss. Part of that is $160,000 unrealized investment loss. $139,000 drop in DOC, prison revenue for sewer services because of the closing of the prison. Connection fees are down $33,000 year-over-year. Expenses Q1 were $433,000 versus $379,000. This is in several areas. Operations are $17,000 higher. areas. Operations are 17,000 higher. Capital improvements are higher by 5,000. Debt service is higher by 11,000. This is the WIFL loan. This is budgeted, and miscellaneous expenses higher by 19. Sanitation fund revenues came in at 290,000 versus 261,000 year-over-year. Revenues were higher 29,000. User fees came in at 43,000 higher, but again, the unrealized loss dropped it to 14,000. Expenses for sanitation came in at 296 versus 267 year-over-year. Operations are higher by 23,000. This is due to our collector. We had a 5% rate increase last February because of fuel, and that built into our contract. Miscellaneous expenses came in at 5,000 higher year-over-year. The total cash available September 30th, 2022, our operating account had 7.9 million. Our credit card account had 177,000. We have 9,000 left in an LGIP investment account, 276,000 in another LGI investment account, 83.4 million is in our PFM investment account, and 27,000 is in our police evidence account, for a total cash of 91.9 million. Some of the items going on in the finance department. It's budget season, so we will start over in the next, in the next 30 days, getting that rolled out. Council approved the ClearGov budget software last June. We are implementing that now. That will be ready for department directors in mid-December to start entering their CIP submission. The implement, we've implemented the compensation plan adjustment. Payroll going out this week, this Friday, will include rate adjustments. That'll be the first check that has the rate adjustments in it. The DIF study is wrapping up. We will be bringing that to council in about 45 days. The water state, excuse me, the water study rate change public hearing is set for December 7th, 2022, and that's a Wednesday night. We are also implementing online pay stubs and W2s for all staff. We hope to have that completed by March 30th. And we are implementing the new time and attendance system, and we'll be deploying time clocks town-wide. Our current attendance system is over the web, and it has no reporting functions, and it's time we upgrade to a new system. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Counsel, do you have any questions on the presentation? I don't have any questions, but I did find it very informative, and I jotted down some numbers along the way as well as when I reviewed it, and it looks like we are in a great position, so I want to say thank you for that.
Oh, you bet. And we are. Thanks.
Thank you. That's what we strive for. And taking care of everybody along the way, which is great. Our next item is Item 7, the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is approving the 2023 Town of Florence Title 11 Implementation Plan. Item B is approval of the fiscal year 2022 subrecipient agreement with the Penal County for the Community Development Block Grant Program, Americans with Disabilities Act Sidewalk Improvement Project. Item C, approval of the town council meeting minutes of September 19th, 26, 2022. Item D, receive and file the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes of October 6, 2022. And Item E, accept the register of demands ending October 31st, 2022, in the amount of $2,428,694.55. Ladies and gentlemen, that is our consent agenda. Is there any member of the council or public that would like any item removed? Ms. Adam, which item?
I believe it's 6B, the CDPG.
Okay. That's the first time I had a member of the public ask for that, so thank you. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of Item B at this time.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with removal of Item B, please.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Adam, please come up to the podium. Oh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Thank you. And Ms. Adam, please come up to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. So on the CDPG, as I understand it, these are those ADA ramps that we put on the curbs at the corners. In the last go-around, which has been some years now, we have some on ruggles, and I believe it's Penal, where 10 feet in is a telephone pole in the middle of the sidewalk. Now, we're proposing to do this for the, I guess, southern end of Bailey and Penal. And again, there are phone poles in the middle of the sidewalk. I am not against this. I understand the way the CDPG funding works, but it seems kind of stupid, right? If we cannot get the phone poles out of the middle of sidewalks, the wheelchairs can't go down the sidewalk. So we're doing the right thing with grant funding, but ultimately, we are not helping ADA access. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. At that time, I do see Jennifer Evans is online, so I'm going to have her speak to that comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I, we will have to review or go down the sidewalk to ensure or find out exactly where those poles are located, and we'll be working with Public Works to do that. They are the department that's in charge of that particular project, so we will get that information and report back to the council.
All right. If we tabled this item, would that interfere with any of the application timeline that would be necessary?
It, it does slightly, Madam Mayor. Penal County staff has asked us to approve this agreement so they can put it on the Board of Supervisors' agenda in the next couple of weeks. As far as the project itself, I, and versus the agreement, the agreement's just our standard agreement with the county to proceed with the project. We haven't gotten into the finer details of the project yet, so that's, that will be forthcoming. It is, of course, up to the council whether or not you would like to approve this agreement. Contingent upon that, additional information coming back to you, I will leave it up to, to your discretion.
If it is approved and it is brought back to us, we could still make changes, just as we did with the roundabout for clarification. Is that correct?
That's correct. We can adjust the scope of the project to accommodate that particular issue.
Okay, did you want to add anything?
We will be able to adjust the scope, but the agreement will be adopted by our town council, and it will be adopted by Penal County. That's just the basic standard agreement.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments regarding this item? Okay, did that answer your question, Ms. Adams? You're very welcome. Thank you. With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item Number 7B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8 is our unfinished business. This is Discussion Approval Disapproval to Adopt Ordinance Number 72022, an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, amending Chapters 32 of the Florence Town Code by adding Section 32, 300, establishing the Charles Whitlow Rodeo Grounds Advisory Board. The first reading was held on November 7th, 2022. Ms. Garcia?
Mayor and members of councils, these are housekeeping items to just make sure that our code is consistent with the wishes of the town council.
All right. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing no such movement, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve Ordinance Number 720-22.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same side. And that motion carries. Item B is Discussion Approval Disapproval to Adopt Ordinance Number 721-22. This is an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, amending Chapter 32 of the Florence Town Code by adding Section 32, 001, to add the Charles Whitlow Rodeo Advisory Board and the Florence Teen Council to the section. The first reading was held on November 7th, 2022. Ms. Garcia?
This item, once again, is a housekeeping item that adds both the Teen Council and the Charles Whitlow Rodeo Ground Advisory Board to your agenda. Sorry, to your Code of Ordinances.
Is there anybody who has any questions or comments? Seeing no such movement, we need a motion.
I make a motion. We approve Ordinance 721-22.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same side. Motion carries. We have nine new business. Discussion Approval Disapproval to Adopt Resolution Number 1851-22. This is a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, approving a replat of Lot 1A of the Anthem Marketplace
This one?
at Merrill Ranch subdivision, generally located at the northeast corner of Merrill Ranch Parkway and Hunt Highway. Ms. Maricela Benitez.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, tonight is to go over the replat of the Merrill Ranch Marketplace from separating Lot 1A into two parcels. The plaza that we are looking at is also known as the Sehway Plaza on Anthem between Ha-Ha Way and Merrill Ranch Parkway. It was originally final-platted in 2007, and then it was replatted for more pads in 2009, and now they are creating another separate pad as well. The owner and manager, Evergreen Hut and Merrill Ranch LLC, are completing this replat, and this piece of land is the northernmost end of that commercial area. So here we have the 1A and 1B, just splitting them into both separate parcels. This meets the Town Code and PUD standards, specifically what was set in the PUD, as it called out that we meet the Town Code that was in 2000, as that was when this PUD was established, and there there was no lot, minimum lot depth or width, as well as minimum lot area. So these two are large enough parcels to accommodate future commercial spaces, and they meet the PUD code requirements. Now, they still have to meet the specified setbacks, parking standards, elevation, other design materials or design criteria when those lots are filled, such as parking and such. With that being said, staff recommends approving this replat from Lot 1A into these two separate parcels, and we have two businesses standing by in order to fill them, and they are to be an AutoZone and a Starbucks. So town council can reject this replat, or they can vote to approve it as well. Are there any questions?
Counsel, do you have any questions? No, it was explained very well.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the detail in the packet as well. I noticed that we have some representatives here. Is there anything that you would like to add at this time? With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion. We approve Resolution 1851-22.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is our second opportunity for Call to the Public at this time. Is there anybody either in person or online that would like to speak? Mr. Jose Maldonado?
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. How are you this evening?
Good, ma'am. My wife, Susan Maldonado, had a question.
Hi, I have a question. Very happy to hear about AutoZone and Starbucks. What I would like to know is, I couldn't see on that diary I had, is the only access into that, those two businesses going to be through the Sehway parking lot, or are we going to have lanes on Hunt Highway to get in there?
So what I will do is I will have Ms. Maricela Benitez reach out to you during Call to the Public. We just listen to comments, and our rules only allow us to respond to criticism or give direction to staff, so I will give direction to staff to reach out and answer that question for you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time? Seeing no such movement, I'm going to go ahead and close our second Call to the Public and move on to our Call to the Council for current events only. Mr. Johnny, Council Member Mendoza.
I don't have anything at this time.
Council Member Rodriguez?
I just want to say I went to the Second Chance Prom over at the Women's Center. It was fantastic. It was a great night. Got to enjoy hanging out with everyone and getting to dance and just enjoy our local atmosphere. So it was great. I hope that everybody comes out for Junior Parada. That's coming up right around the corner. There's the parade and all kinds of events going on, so I hope everyone comes out and enjoys our great town and supports our small businesses. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Member Neal?
I have nothing.
Council Member Anderson?
I have a couple of things. One, I would like for my proposed coding for nepotism to be brought forward at the next meeting with two changes. One, we talked about adding siblings as a part of the family relatives, and the other thing we want to clarify is that this does not apply to our part-time employees.
All right. And I do know Ms. Garcia is following up with the attorney on that, so she will communicate with you.
She already has.
So we had an opportunity in our town to partner with the Arizona Diamondbacks and the Kendricks Foundation, and I want to say thank you. Our staff did a lot of work on that, especially our community services department, so I want to give them some special recognition. They did an amazing job of working together and putting all of the improvements forward that have occurred. It was really nice to see everybody out and enjoying the ballpark. It was cool to see somebody who we watched go through as a little leaguer all the way up to a 3A player in our local community throughout the first pitch, Mr. Matt Olson. And then it was neat to see how on the scoreboard, they, they set the score. The home team was three, the away team was two, there was one ball, one strike. The home team was three, the away team was two, there was one ball, one strike. The significance of that was the 2001 World Series where the Arizona Diamondbacks played the New York Yankees, and they won. So, they, they continue to help and support small communities and share their history as well as the love of sports and letting our kids be involved. Sorry, I didn't want to hurt anybody's ears with that ringing. That was interesting. So I do want to recognize them and say thank you for everything that you have done for our community, and we're always looking to continue making improvements. Small Business Saturday is coming up. We have some really cute shops in town. I hope everybody shops local, and even if you don't live in Florence and you're watching this somewhere else, we have businesses that partake in shopping online and they will ship to you. So with that, that's all I have this evening because everything else was mentioned, such as the Second Chance Prom and the Junior Parada. We have a lot of great events that are occurring, and I hope to see everybody out and about. With that, we do need a motion to adjourn to the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number 1.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right. At this time, Ms. Garcia, we're calling the meeting to order. Roll call.
I've taken a silent roll call that duplicates the roll call at the beginning of the meeting.
Thank you so much. Item C is discussion and possible action to approve Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number 1, November 7th, 2022, special meeting minutes. Is there anybody who has any questions or comments? Seeing no such movement, we need a motion.
I make a motion. We approve the minutes of November 7th, 2022.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item D is discussion and possible consideration of the following items to be handled individually relating to authorizing special assessment lien bonds in the amount not to exceed $721,000 of aggregate principal. We'll begin with Item 1, which is the public hearing on the feasibility report, projects assessment Area 10, Units 57 and 60. Ms. Jimenez.
We've asked Carl to step in tonight.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dudding.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, tonight we come before you, along with Mark Reader, our financial advisor, and Mike Cafiso, our bond counsel, to hold a public hearing, as well as consideration and possible adoption of two resolutions for special assessment liens in Area 10. Area 10 has two units. I've circled those in yellow here. Unit 57 has 116 lots on 22.4 acres. This parcel is located west of Felix Road between Desert Bloom Way and Rushmore Way, east of Princeton Drive, and west of Riverside Drive. Unit 60 has 90 lots sitting on 26.5 acres. This parcel runs east along Sun City Boulevard, north of Metal Lark Way, east of the Greenbelt, and south of Vacant Land. There are a total of 206 lots in Area 10. These are all single-family units. These assessments will be used for storm, drainage, and street improvements. Each lot will be assessed $3,500 for a total of $721,000. These proceeds will be used for the purchase of public infrastructure in the amount of $558,900, cost of issuance of $90,000, and debt service reserve of $72,100. These assessments will be placed on the Penalt County tax rolls for annual billing and collection. The estimated annual assessment will run approximately $350. This covers principal interest and includes an administrative fee of $18 to cover billing and staff costs. Just a reminder, these assessments can be paid off anytime without any prepayment penalty to the owner, as well as relieve any unbilled interest. I will now call on Mark Reader to discuss the bond sale, as well as address any questions the board might have regarding the feasibility study before the opening of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Dudding. Madam Chair, members of the board, good evening. Mark Reader with Stiefel. Carl did a good job of outlining the proposed transaction, the amount of the transaction at about $721,000. Bonds will be sold here in a few weeks to reimburse Polte for the public infrastructure improvements that he described to you. The feasibility report that you have in front of you is one that you've seen before. We update this on all of our special assessment bonds. We've issued numerous special assessment bonds over the years, as you know. So this is really more of a statutory document, provides a good background on the development progress. Polte's working hard out there, and they're getting ready to move the trailers in on Unit 10, 57 and 60 that we're talking about this evening. They have asked us to move forward expeditiously, sell the bonds, and they anticipate moving the trailers on the sites and initiate residential home sales somewhere around December the 15th. So, again, Carl did a real good job of describing to you the transaction, the location, of course, you're very familiar with it anyway, and the infrastructure to be, to be acquired by the CFD. So I won't go into all the details on this because we know you've seen this before, but with your approval tonight, and I think the next agenda item is a resolution that I'm glad to also speak of, it will be moving forward expeditiously with the bond sale. So with that, I'm glad to answer any questions that the board might have. Thank you.
Board, do you have any questions?
The only thing, I guess, I wanted to clarify necessarily for me, but the only homes that will be impacted by this would be the potential homes that are built in these areas, not the existing homes that are already accounted for. I just want to make that abundantly clear, correct?
Yeah. Madam Chair, Ms. Rodriguez, that is correct. Thank you.
All right. There are no further questions. It's time to open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the public or online that has any questions? Seeing no such movement, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Going on to Item 2. Consideration and possible adoption of MRCFD-1 Resolution 14622, Resolution of the Board of Directors of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number 1, approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of a Tenth Amendment and waivers, assessment Area 10, Units 57 and 60, for district development, finance participation, waiver, and intergovernmental agreement. Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number 1, authorizing and ratifying the giving of notice of hearing with respect to approving a feasibility report, which includes identifying the public infrastructure of the projects, the areas to be benefited, the expected method of financing, and the systems of providing revenues to operate and maintain the projects, all as provided in such report, approving such feasibility report and resolving the intent thereof, and reordering the work with respect thereto. With that, we need a motion.
Do we have a motion for Number 2 or Number 3?
Number 2.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 14622.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Item 3. Consideration and possible adoption of MRCFD-1 Resolution Number 147-22, a resolution of the Board of Directors of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number 1, approving the assessment diagram and method of assessment with respect to assessment Area 10, and providing for the levy of the related assessment and authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $721,000 aggregate principal amount of special assessment lien bonds, assessment Area 10, and approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of an indenture of trust and security agreement and certain other documents with respect to the bonds. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, we need a motion. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item 13. Adjournment from the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number 1 meeting.
Make a motion for adjournment from the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number 1.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. And Item Number 14. We need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion. We adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same sign. We are adjourned. Have a wonderful evening, everybody.